Everybody ready?
We're ready.
Okay, I will call a meeting to order. Fran will not be with us tonight. So I think this is one of the first times I think Fran hasn't been with, or trip to Colorado, maybe. Anyway, um, so we have short agenda tonight. I'd like to table a discussion on marijuana legislation until Thursday. We have a full board. Also, I didn't really have time to look at it closely, went over it. Do have a couple of questions, but we have to work on that fairly quickly. According to Jeff by August 1st, is that right, Jeff? In order to, I guess, if we wanted to go to, put it on the ballot, is that right?
August 2nd is the deadline to submit something to the county.
Oh, to the county, okay. But then we'd have to, if we wanted to opt out, we'd have to have, there would have to be petitions, which would then, we would, you know, I guess, direct us to a referendum, which would be then be on the November ballot?
Correct. Though the Board of Trustees can pass a resolution instead of a petition from residents.
Oh, okay. So you can do a resolution instead of petitions?
Correct.
Okay, so the all the thing about 10% and the governor's last election and all of that can be, we don't have to follow that if the board has a resolution?
Correct.
Okay.
The board can pass a resolution, draft a local law, then that would go on the refer, that would be the referendum that goes on the ballot.
Okay. And then that would be a quick timeframe after that. You have 45 days or whatever after, if it was passed at the election to actually, get it done, I guess, right?
Yes, well, December 31st is the deadline.
Right. So you'd have, I guess you'd have two months, plenty of time. Okay.
And we have, we do have a sample, a sample local law that NICOM has prepared.
Okay.
Dave, rescheduling it till Thursday. Thursday's the public meeting.
Oh, I forgot about that. Okay, um, well, I'll just, I'll reschedule to the following Tuesday or whatever.
Okay, now the following Tuesday, we have a public hearing on the, on the franchise.
Okay, next year, next.
We could, it could be done on Tuesday. I'm just pointing, we have the public hearing on the franchise at 6:30. Then we, at 7 o'clock, we have the normal monthly meeting.
Franchise public hearing shouldn't be a long one, right? Are they, are they normally?
No.
Well attended and well addressed?
Typically, no.
So let's, let's shoot for next Tuesday, then. If not, then we'll have to, have to call a special meeting or whatever, maybe next Wednesday. I don't think a lot of parking, I'm not sure. Unless everyone wants, I'm not sure, I'd rather have a full board, so.
Yeah, I understand. It's just, I think it'd be a problem to do it on Thursday.
Yeah, definitely. I forgot about the, about the presentation that night. That'll definitely eat the whole night up. So, all right, so I'll make a motion to table to discussion marijuana legislation and reschedule for next Tuesday.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jeff, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
So if August 2nd is the deadline for getting a permissive referendum on the ballot, and that means we need to get it to the Board of Elections.
Can I just interrupt just for a second? I wanted to just move this discussion to Tuesday. So this, I think those questions should be answered then. And I just thought of a motion out there. So the motion that I made was to, to table this and to move it to next Tuesday. We have a second. Can I have a vote, please?
Yes.
No.
Yeah.
Tweets?
Yeah, I'm gonna say no as well.
Yeah, I see no reason that we can't ask a question about timing.
Well, it was, it was kind of, it's my agenda and I think that we were gonna move it. So, if a discussion was gonna be had on Tuesday, why couldn't it be made on?
I was prepared to have a conversation this evening. It was on the agenda.
Well, I'm sorry that was on the agenda tonight, but we didn't know that Fran was gonna be here tonight, and I think a full board needs to be here. Excuse me, we really just have to have a little bit of order. And one of the things is, is that people just can't just burst in and say anything they want anytime. I know that's difficult, but really, it's, I'm trying to control the meeting. I don't want it, I don't want to discuss this because I think it needs a full board. And we don't have a full board, and that came up to us late today with an apology from Trustee Murphy. And I would like to, as the mayor, the one running the, running this meeting and the one that sets the agenda, table this until next Tuesday.
I'll email my question to Jeff.
The whole thing next Tuesday. We can discuss the dates, we can discuss everything.
I'll email my question to Jeff. Thank you.
So, so where's that, where are we with the, with my motion to move it to next Tuesday?
I said yes.
I will make the motion again. I'd like to make a motion to move the discussion to next Tuesday.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not sure, that's never happened before, so. I'm not sure why we can't move this discussion till next Tuesday. Tweeps, do you have a reason why we shouldn't move it?
Yeah, I mean, I think, just looking at the timeline, if we work backwards from August 2nd and we wanna have some public discussion and for the public to have some time to digest what this legislation involves and what it would mean for us. I think, timing wise, we just kind of are in a crunch. So, I mean, I think a conversation tonight would be very helpful. I appreciate the fact that Fran isn't here and that was last minute, so, you know. It, this, this is not ideal, and I wonder then, if for next Tuesday, can we make this the first thing on the agenda so that we can make sure that we give it time, or are we forced to do it?
The public hearing is scheduled for 6:30.
We can schedule a public hearing, but I, I don't think there's gonna be anyone on it, or it'll be, we can continue as we have done before with our meeting and, and if anyone, and then keep the public comment period open at the hearing. And I'm sure we'll get it in, or we'll make sure we get it in. And if we don't, then we'll schedule a meeting for Wednesday that'll just be for the marijuana legislation.
Is your concern that you were looking for a vote? I didn't expect that you were voting on anything tonight, just that you were discussing the legislation. And so that's, we're prepared for the discussion. So I don't know why we can't have the four of us a conversation and put off any vote until we have Trustee Murphy.
I would like to have Trustee Murphy here, a full board while we discuss this. And I see no reason why we can't move it to Tuesday. And if Tuesday doesn't work to Wednesday for discussion, there's plenty of time to do that.
If it makes the process easier, I'm happy to move this forward. It's, it seems silly to not move it forward. I would just note that, I don't know, I don't know about others, but I did prepare for a conversation.
You just called what I wanna do silly. Thank you very much. I do appreciate that. Yeah, you know what the procedures are as far as if, if it's, you know, if it's two to two. I've never had this happen.
I believe it doesn't pass.
Okay.
It doesn't pass.
Okay, so I guess you can discuss all you want. I will step away because I have not, I have not followed, I have not really digested the, the law. I didn't have time to do that. So I'm not really ready to discuss it tonight. And with, with our friend here too, I just don't see why there's a needed rush. This is, this is a deja vu all over again as far as when we went back to the reform, so. If you'd like to continue the discussion, I guess, I guess it's, that that's what happens. So go ahead, continue to discuss.
So Jeff, the question was if the, if the deadline to get a, the permissive referendum on the ballot is August 2nd, I assume you would need to have a public hearing on that draft prior. Is that correct, that you'd need a public hearing? And then?
That is my understanding.
Like?
That is my understanding. What I will do is, um, I wanna send John first an email and ask him for the timeline and the correct steps that need to be done for that. If that's the direction the board wants to move it. I meant to do that, said I didn't get a chance. I'll do, send them an email tomorrow.
Because it sounded like from the, from the documentation from NICOM, that Village Board of Trustees may bypass the petition process by submitting a permissive referendum to voters upon its own motion. And I didn't understand, when you and I talked on the phone earlier today, you said draft local law. It was unclear to me if, if it needed to be a draft local law or simply a motion to prepare a draft local law.
I need to verify and clarify with John. I have not, in my four or five years, I have not gone through this with a passive referendum. So I will follow up with John tomorrow and get the proper steps and procedures.
Cool.
Need to be done.
Sure. I mean, we just have such a short turnaround. I feel like we should, we should know the steps that we need to take right away.
Um, and my other thought was just that, I hope that we'll have an opportunity, you know, our personal opinions don't matter here. It's, you know, what, what the community is looking for, and I hope that we'll have an opportunity to have public feedback before we either make a motion or draft a local law to see if the public actually is interested in having this go to permissive referendum.
It'll be tight, but we should have the time.
Say that again?
It will be tight, but we should have time to do a resolution, if necessary, draft a local law, and get public input on that.
Yeah, it seems like it would be smart to get public input earlier rather than later, because of this, if the, you know, if the sentiment is to not proceed with a referendum, then you know that earlier on before you move in that way. I just don't have a, I don't have a sense of what, I don't have a sense of what the community is looking for in this. I don't feel that I have a sense, a broad, sort of a broad sense of what people in the village want. That was all.
Also, I think it would be important to get as much information up for the public as possible on the, on our, on our website, or however we transmit that information so that they actually know what we're talking about and can have a say that's based in, in some information and facts, whatever the opinion might be. I just think that would be very helpful. I know for myself, that would be having resources to understand that the pros and cons would be very helpful.
It seemed like that, that the NICOM document could be a possibility for something to post, and then that draft local law. There was also, there's also an assessment of the potential impact of regulated marijuana in New York that was done with the Health Department, under the Health Department with a variety of other state offices, and that seems like that could be something that might be useful to put up as a link.
Agreed. So, curious about, maybe a survey? Is this something that we could do? I realize that, again, it is a short amount of time, but I wonder if that might be helpful to, to, to kind of just get at as much of the population as possible for those who might not wanna come to a public forum or, you know, have another opportunity to, to participate? Is that a question for, for us, or is that a question for, for someone else in terms of procedures?
I would think that it would be the easier that you make it for folks to participate in the same ways with, with the last survey. We have a Survey Monkey subscription for a year. It doesn't have to be complex. It seems like it could be two questions. You know, are you, are you wanting to allow cannabis dispensaries and/or onsite consumption establishments in the village? And do you want the village to allow consumption on village-owned properties? And then maybe, I don't know, maybe a comments portion. It doesn't seem, doesn't need to be complex. Are you a village resident or not? You know, there've been concerns in the past about whether folks, someone is living in the village or not. Those were the notes that I had for tonight. Seems like a good idea to take advantage of the technology we have, since we paid for a Survey Monkey subscription.
I agree. So I guess then, since no one else is gonna comment, then we will wait to get additional information from you, Jeff, about the procedures and we'll have more robust conversations next week on Tuesday when everyone is, is here. Is that the next move, or?
It's for the board to decide what the next move is, so.
Well, I would come up with something, would it be probably silly? So I don't really know where to go with this, you know? All this stuff was, definitely could never have waited till next week, so. If, if, if discussion is ended, then we will move along to the next. You, you, Tweeps and Trustee Foley, you can let me know if discussion is ended, or are we continuing?
I have no further comment.
I, my notes were, I articulated them.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, okay, good start. Let's go to correspondence. We have a request to set for food truck at Mayor's Park. I would just like to bring to the board's attention that we are, the Parking Committee is working on metering Mayor's Park, and we're trying to meter that along with, you know, change vendors and meter the municipal lot and the Mayor's Park as, you know, quickly as we can. Our contract with Devo is, is up or will be up, so we'd like to move ahead on that as soon as possible. And we're trying to gather information on timing and all that on that. So that is one, one area that's would seem to pose a problem with having a food truck at Mayor's Park. The last time we had a food truck here, we allowed one down there. It didn't sit well with anyone, and the person had a really, really well organized and a very good setup. But neighbors were not happy. And then, or not vendor merchants in Coal Spring or food vendors were not happy also. So that's my recollection of it.
I'm wondering if, if, you know, we talked about this in, over the winter, when someone came in with a proposal for a different location, which was, we concluded was not a safe or reasonable spot at the corner of 9DN, Maine. From what I recall, the discussion of the Fair Street food truck from the last go-round is that it wasn't, I, I think that you were, that someone was referring to either that one or the location that was in Dockside, that there wasn't enough traffic. Was that the Fair Street? I know that was the case in Dockside. Was that the case too with the Fair Street location, that there wasn't enough traffic for the vendor? It wasn't successful for the vendor as well, or was it just the neighborhood pushback?
From what I remember, it was the pushback. She just didn't come back. So I don't think she ever sent us a, a reason.
The food truck at Mayor's Park, that was the veteran, Dave?
It was the, uh,
It was the hot dog stand.
No, no, no. Well, yeah, they were there and he, he said there wasn't enough traffic and he left. That was at the foot of Main Street.
No, he, I thought he was.
Well, regardless, he, he didn't stay long either. And then the other person had the food truck, I forget their name. Jeff might.
It was Michelle McGuire.
And she was, she was in Dockside, right?
No, she was at Mayor's Park.
Oh.
She did it for one day. I would say it was in September, two years ago.
Yeah, it was two years ago.
Yeah, okay.
So it was, it was before, it was before the massive crowds on Fair Street. We don't know how they're gonna be.
No, it wasn't. The crowds on Fair Street were the same as they are.
I'm sorry, I mean, I mean pre-COVID size was what I meant. And I assume, I assume, I think it's, it's fair to assume that we're gonna have that high density again, so in that spot. Things, I, I wonder if it's, if it's reasonable to have the Rec Commission look at it. I know, I, we obviously don't wanna block parking spaces. I'm wondering if toward the end, down near where the gate is, we can't block the gate, but just beyond the gate, if that's a location that would work. It seems like there, among, among issues talked about last summer was the, the limited availability of food options on Main Street. You know, enough spaces for people to sit and eat. If, if, if the location could be found where a food truck could work and not be, not have negative impacts on neighbors, it seems like it could be a good thing to offer another, another option for people moving down Fair Street and out of the village. I don't know if others to share that thought.
Yeah.
I mean, if the Rec Committee can come up with a good location, I think it would be great to have other food options for sure.
I, I think that it should be up to the Village Board to decide if you wanna have a food truck in, in those areas. I just think that's a, that's a, an answer that we should be giving, you know, and that the Rec Department would need from us.
Sure, well, it's, it's the, the code has, has the permit being issued by the mayor. I just wondered if the Rec Commission might be able to provide some feedback on a, on possible alternatives in that location.
Well, the location, in my opinion, the location, if it is in front of Mayor's Park, would inhibit the, the fees for parking.
If it were in the parking area, right?
Yeah.
But beyond, there's a little space beyond the parking spaces, parking spaces. The key would be not blocking the gate.
But she wants, she wants it seven days a week from 10:00 AM to.
That's another issue.
Pardon me?
Sorry, that, go ahead.
It's also not a small vehicle that would have to go, would have to go parallel with the fence is gonna take up at least three spots. And then if she's gonna have anything else, or an umbrella or whatever, maybe more.
Yeah, I, I was thinking, I went down and took pictures today. This is why I was wondering if it could go to the Rec Commission, because beyond where the park, the line parking area is, there is some space. I don't know where the boundary is exactly for the village line there. But I'm wondering if there's a potential for it beyond the parking spaces.
Well, I, for one, am incredibly familiar with it. I, I've been down there a million times. I've taken photos down there when we did our parking. There's a fence and then probably a few spaces beyond that, that we're probably gonna be included in our parking, in the parking meter.
So right, right now, there are, there are cones up beyond the parking, beyond the gate in a narrower area. That's narrower than where the, where the, where the gate ends, the, the asphalt area becomes narrower. Are those intended?
Pole there, a utility pole.
Right, right. So do you, do you, does the Parking Committee envision the parking going beyond the gate?
I would think there would be two spots there that we can utilize.
Oh, I see what you mean, in front of the, to the, to the south of the pole? Before, before the pole, you mean between the gate and the pole?
Yes.
Yeah, and it does get narrower beyond that. So maybe it's not an option. And the gate, I don't, I don't know. The, putting in the park is problematic because then you're giving over public space to a private enterprise. So, you know, maybe it won't work, but I thought, I thought it might be useful having other eyes have a look.
Well, being familiar with the areas, I'm not sure where, where they would find besides in the park that, that it would actually go. I mean, there's only so much area down there. There's this parking area, and then there's the gates, and then there's a little area, and then from there on to the end of the village property or boundaries, there's just a narrow strip of land, so it's not going there.
Too narrow, yeah.
Not going in front of the gates. I wouldn't recommend it going unless you would like to pay whatever we're charging per hour for seven days a week.
What, for the, the parking price, you mean? Yeah.
Yeah, and then there's the vendor fee.
Mm-hmm, right.
So it could be, it just doesn't seem to me to be a reasonable approach for vendors, vendors at Mayor's Park, inside or outside.
It also raises the concern that, well, you raised the concern, Marie, that about, about the time. That's, you know, it's like, that's a permanent, that would be almost a permanent installation of one vendor. And it seems like if we're, if that space were to be, if it, if it were to be able to accommodate food trucks, you would want to be able to have multiple vendors have access on some, some more rotating way, right? Rather than giving a permanent permit for a whole summer.
Well, I, I'm, I personally not in favor of it, of having the food truck down there. Everyone else would like to comment yes or no, or how you'd like to move this along?
Yeah, I'm not in favor. I'm not in favor of it. I mean, I don't know what that would do to the Presbyterian Church. If they're still having their sessions there, we've got the Food Fest, we've got the Food Fest there potentially. And who knows what other events might get scheduled there.
That's a good point.
Tweeps, thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I, you bring up really valid points that I, you know, I don't understand in the same level of details you do, so. I guess it seems like that's not, that is not the location for a food truck at this point. There might be other locations, but that's probably not the best one, given the concerns that you raise.
I agree.
Okay, so we, Jeff, if you could contact the owner and tell her we unfortunately cannot agree to it. Appreciate that.
Will do.
Okay, um, do we have any, uh, I, I think the short-term rentals, it's our, our discussion. I think we'll be taking any public comments after that. So is there any public comments at this point?
Nobody has their hand up. All right, Matt Francisco?
Thanks, Jeff. I was just wondering, is the board gonna have any information about the, you know, about potential revenues for cannabis sales and consumption onsite? I mean, for discussion with the public hearing? And prior to?
I just looked at, I just looked at it quickly tonight, and that's why I wanted to move it ahead, so I would bone up on it. So I think it'll all go online, so everyone will be able to see that. But I, I'm gonna really take a look at it.
Okay, thank you. That'd be really helpful, because obviously.
What's that, sorry?
Sorry, you know, so this seems to be a delay. I think it'd be helpful just for the residents to understand, because, you know, it seems unlikely that, you know, Beacon would opt out and, you know, those revenues have to come back here, unlike our sales tax. It could be something that could align, you know, the residents with the merchants. The, the question is clear on whether or not you want consumption and, and sale here. But the, you know, the, the impetus or the, you know, the incentive is really the, you know, those revenues that would come directly to the village. But the, you know, the, uh, the impetus or the, you know, the incentive is really the, you know, those revenues that would come directly to the village. So I think it would, uh, any discussion would be incomplete with having some, without having some information on that. Thanks.
Good point. Thank you. Anyone else, Jeff?
That is it.
Okay, so we will, uh, move ahead with the, uh, short-term rentals. I won't be taking any public comment at the end of that, uh, period. This is, uh, our, actually, our discussion on. Public comment, which we heard at the public hearing, uh, which we started, uh, so. I did make, um, on the Google Docs, I do have, uh. I made some comments. There's a number of things I, I think we should add or, you know, consider. Um, brought them up last week. I think there should be three classifications or, or four. Um, but. I'd like to go over those so that we'll give more opportunities and maybe less restrictions on some. Um, I think we should add, uh, hosted, um, to the definitions. So that, um, so that we can break that down later. It's a short-term rental where, you know, where the host remains. Reigns on the site during the term of the rental. Uh, I think that was brought up and, and I think that makes sense. Um, unhosted also I think should be added, um, which is obvious. It's, uh. You know, rentals where, uh, the owner is not, or the host is not on site. Um, then I think classifications could be unhosted, hosted with one room. Um, because I think there is a big difference between someone renting one room and renting a whole unit, whether it's hosted or not. Um, so I think we should, uh, discuss that if, uh, everyone feels like that's something, uh, that would work and give people more opportunities. And then a special provisional, which we could rename. That's the only thing that I could come up with in short. Short time I was working on this and I think that would be someone that wants to rent for a week or two at the most, um. If they're going on vacation or during the, uh, West Point graduation. Um, so, so those are the four areas that, um. I kind of think we should discuss and see if we could fit in or not, depending on what people think. I think that the, uh, fee should go up. I think one thing everyone seemed to agree on, whether they were. Disliked or liked our, uh, our, uh, the law which we drafted was that the fees should go up considerably, so. Um, I have jumped them up, uh, to a thousand dollars for the first defense.
You mean, mean the penalties?
What's that?
You mean the penalties?
The penalties, yes, sorry. And, uh, and then fifty, and two thousand dollars and then twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, and what I would suggest is that, that you up them in A, I think they also need to be upped in B. A is, i- if the owner is found to be operating in S T R without the procedures and regulations. That's one set of penalties. And then B is if a person is found to be operating without the permit. Those fees should go up as well.
But, uh, I agree.
Okay.
Ran out of time this morning before I went to work.
Same on you. So, so.
I agree totally.
So one of the things that I did is I took your definitions and put them in the format that is normal. For, um, definitions. I added a few words for hosted. Um, I added a few words for, um. Uh, unhosted. I added a word or two for special provisional permit. Um, for the classifications. Um, you have unhosted, hosted one room and the second one hosted, sh- instead of one unit, it should be one entire residence. Because we've, we've defined a unit above.
Okay.
Where a unit can be either, um, a specific bedroom or bedrooms or the entire residence.
Okay. Do you want to add that change?
Yes.
As a suggestion or whatever?
Yeah, I will edit as a suggestion. Whoops, I mean, I'm editing it. I don't want to do that.
Comment from the other board members on, on those suggestions?
So do you want me to accept all the changes?
Not hearing anything either way, so not sure. Um, I would, I would accept, but, uh. Again, and nothing from. Anyone else?
Lost Kathleen. She just texted me. She's trying to get back in. She's having internet problems.
Okay, so we'll wait.
Tweets, do you have any feelings on expansion of, uh, you know, the, the ways that we offer permits?
No, I, it looks.
Right now, we basically have no, there's no, uh, you know, really options. You either are, you know, it's like one way.
Yeah.
For rentals.
Yeah, understood. I, I, um. I agree. Uh, with your edits thus far.
Well, wait.
We definitely have to work on how we do this, but I think, I think if we break that down.
Jeff, can you let us know when Kathleen's back in?
Okay, she seems to be having. A hard time.
You know, if she paid her bill, she probably wouldn't have, have this kind of difficulty. I don't, I'm not, I'm not saying she didn't pay her bill.
Everyone is sort of breaking, might not just be.
Okay, I just admitted her, Jeff.
Yeah, she's back.
Okay. Kathleen, can you unmute?
Yes, I'm gonna leave the video off and see if that helps the connection to be more stable.
Okay.
I missed all of the introduction, sorry, because it, it froze, but.
So what we, what we did is we said you agreed to everything.
Perfect.
I'm joking, I'm joking. So look at definitions.
Okay.
The first new definition is hosted. Are you, and there, there will be another definition, unhosted, which is essentially a short-term rental during which. The host is not on site. So are you okay with hosted?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I'm accepting these. Consider me to be Fran for the time being. Then we go down to, um. Oh, um, so as it turns out, there was a, under residence, there was a different font. So I've changed that to be consistent. It's Times New Roman, uh, twelve font, twelve size. So residence, that's the only change. Okay with that, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so special provisional permit. This is a new one. That, oh, sorry, short-term rental. I added in here, um, last sentence, any space used for an S T R must be owner occupied for no fewer. At two hundred and sixteen nights per calendar year. And so that was a, a clarification. Everybody okay with that? Okay, so then special provisional permit. This is a new definition. Um, a, a one-time permit issued for up to fourteen consecutive nights in any calendar year.
So this, this incorporates the, um, desire for vacation?
Exactly, exactly. Or for West Point graduations.
Special events.
Yes, special events. Everybody okay with that?
I am.
Okay. Now, unhosted is the inverse of hosted. A short-term rental during which the host is not present on site during the term of the rental. And I forgot a period there. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Tweets and Kathleen?
Your period, period?
No, the, the definition for unhosted. This is a new definition.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, the next one, I'm gonna get rid of that line there. Um, the next one is classifications. And here, Dave, I think you, you mean to have in there the, the fees. And the total number of nights allowed, is that correct?
Yeah, I also ran out of time on that one. Uh, I don't know if there was another way to, uh, to put that in here, but, you know, like. I think it's easy for a special provisional, we could, you know, just as an example, it could follow with, uh. You know, a hundred dollars and, or whatever it is we decide on. And then total number could be unlimited. Or we can come up with a number. Uh, I'm not sure how we'd do that.
Okay, so above that, under special provisional permit, it's a one-time permit issued for up to fourteen consecutive nights. In any calendar year. So, so we've got the, in the definitions, we've got the terms and conditions. For special provisional permit.
Right.
Can I, can I have a question, Marie?
Yeah.
Why under one hundred dash three? This definition, why do we have hosted listed as only one room?
What, what the differentiation is there is you can.
Oh, hosted one room versus entire residence?
Yes, yes.
I see. Just, um, as an FYI, I, I didn't, I don't know if others got notifications. Normally when there are edits in a document to look at. Ahead of a meeting, we get a notice via email saying the edits have been made. Um, so we know to read them before the meeting. I, I didn't get those.
These were not done as edits. They were done as suggestions.
Right, but usually it comes through as a notice. Or are you saying only when it's edits do they come through as in a notice?
It's, um, that's interesting, Kathleen. I don't know why that happened. I, I, I didn't notice it because.
Cause you were the author, yeah.
Right, and well, actually, I got notification of Dave's changes.
Huh, okay, well, apologizing, this is the first I'm seeing these, so we'll just have to go a bit at a time.
Okay.
I, I think they were planning on going very slowly anyway here because, uh, it's like, as you can see, there's nothing much with it besides. That I felt there should be four different classifications and maybe there's more, I don't know. I think this would give people more options and, uh. And spread things out more evenly, make more people happy, um, not really do anything, no damage to neighborhoods and whatever. And, uh, this is all coming from the, uh, meeting, you know, that we had and discussions we had. So. Um, I guess the first thing is, are, are we okay with having four different sections? Um, unhosted would be, you know, what we basically were working on as a whole. Hosted would be. Um, if somebody has a house and has a room and they're there the full time, then, you know, we can come up with a fee for that, you know. You know, subject to the regulations or maybe not all of them. Um, but, uh, maybe an inspection should be done. Um, and a smaller fee for that. Um, and maybe, and then the num- total number of those. Could be more or not incorporated in the thirty-four that we had, or we should change the thirty-four. To a lower number as a municipality like Reinbeck has where it's only fifteen.
Right.
Then hosted would be hosted for the entire residence. I think that's different. It's your, you know. Now we're talking, you know, more of a chance of like a family or whatever coming, maybe more cars, maybe, you know, just. I think there's more involved in that, so, uh, I think that should be limited a little bit more, but also given some flexibility. And then special provisional, I, I think that, you know, I think that, um, you know, that could be, uh. You know, maybe there, there isn't a number, you know, to, you know, a, a limit to those. Um, but that's also to be discussed. So I guess the first thing is, do you want to break these? Does everyone okay with breaking these down? Or do you think they should be renamed or something should be added, whatever?
Um, I'm okay with breaking them out. I think that the way you've done that is responsive to the public comment. I don't. Quite understand the scenario in which. An entire residence is rented and it is still hosted.
That's a good point, Kathleen. Uh, what I was thinking of here is a person who might rent their basement. Their entire lower floor, which may or may not have, uh, cooking facilities. Um, but you're right, I, I added the entire residence and that, that is not correct.
So maybe it could, maybe it helps to say portion or more than one room?
Well, we, we permit. And, uh, if you look at short-term rental unit, uh, the rent, so just go scroll up a little bit.
Yep.
Short-term rental units, the residents rent, the residents rented for use as a short-term. The unit may be an, the entire residence, or may, it may be specific bedrooms in the residence. What we didn't put in here is what hap- how do we describe? On a residence, a structure that contains. The residence that the family lives in and then another s- unit of living. That is what is rented out for a short-term rental, which may or may not have cooking facilities.
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe hosted more than one room, uh, could be in a separate category. You know, one room is one thing. And then if you're getting into two, you're getting into, you know. Family, or then you could also have two separate people renting that might have cars. Um, and.
But, but, what we say is that you can't do two short-term rentals.
True, yeah.
Currently.
Okay.
Right.
So maybe the entire residence hosted, we can take out?
Um.
Yeah, or, or maybe it's, um. Uh, I'm trying to, I, I get, I get the direction you're going. Um, you know, maybe it has to do with. Separate entrance, right? If you. Well, that could be one, that could also be one room, depending on how the building were layout. I just. I'm wondering if we're making it too complicated by trying to break hosted in this way. What's the, what's the benefit? Were you were thinking, Dave, that the benefit might be, I'm asking a question, I'm not making a statement. Were you thinking? That the benefit and breaking it out in that way would be? The fee structure, that you could do a lesser fee structure, structure for a smaller portion of the property that's rented out?
I, I guess I hadn't thought of it all the way through and, uh, not, you know, having a host, um, but then. Renting entire residence is probably impossible. So after thinking about it more, I think we should just take that one out so that someone. Has the opportunity to rent a room.
Yeah, I think, I think simpler is better. Hosted, unhosted and special provisional.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to, um, if I can find my cursor. I'm going to remove dash one room from hosted. And I'm going to remove the second, whoops, my battery's running out, whoops. Bear with me. I'm going to remove the second hosted. And I'm going to. Whoops. And. What I would recommend we do here is move unhosted, uh, to below hosted. And.
Now, in hosted, what, that doesn't address, without, we're taking everything out of there, doesn't address if you have two, you know, you can. Then allow two rooms, you know, if it's just for one rental, someone could rent two rooms.
I would.
Correct.
Three rooms.
Are we worried about that scenario?
Yeah, I think the more rooms is the more people. And then that gets away from thinking, well, it's, you know, it's hosted and someone's there trying to. Make ends meet and has a, uh, you know, a room that they'd like to rent.
Well, I mean, if the, if the owner, if it's owner occupied and, and hosted. Um. It's, it's not, it's less likely to have. To be disruptive. to be disruptive than an unhosted, right? It's no matter how many rooms are there, the, the property owner is still in place watching over things. So if I had, if I had a, a big house and two bedrooms I were letting, and I were on site, I'd be, I'd be managing that, both of those rooms.
And someone could have a family and you can come with two cars. You know, rent two rooms or three rooms, they could have, actually bring three cars, you know, I could bring my family and, and rent rooms if I wanted to.
Ye- yes, right.
Well, like, then I think that puts a kind of a burden on parking and, and changes the scenario a bit.
I just don't, I, I'm, I'm, I'm trying, I'm thinking, I'm thinking as I speak, so it's not entirely clear, but I can see, it, it depends on, I mean, obviously the impact depends on what street it's on, it's the impact on, I don't know. Orchard Street's gonna be different than the impact on Church Street, right? As you can think of, of large houses on Orchard Street, having two rooms available to let and plenty of parking.
But I, I think that, well, well, I guess it goes back to what, what, why, why we're allowing this? Is it to make ends meet, as some people say, or is it, is it to have a business and have a commercial enterprise in your house?
Right, and that's, that's a real distinction, and, and I think for some it is, that latter. But, but still, um, I don't know, I, I guess, part, the part of me, part of me is weighing the question of if it's hosted, that's a far better scenario than an unhosted short-term rental with more than one room, and it's, and at some point, that's, there's much more accountability with the property owner present.
Okay.
So I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's as big a problem or potentially as big a problem as an unhosted, I don't think they're comparable problems.
I, I, I hate to interrupt, but we've got an un, we've got an unknown user.
Again?
Yes. Anonymous Beaver.
It's the same as the other night, yeah?
Um, I thought it was Jaguar. Um, anyway-
There was Connie Bear.
Um.
What do we do?
Jeff, did you, did you-
It's gone.
Jeff, did we ever get an answer from Anthony on this? Do you know?
No, we did not, I know Fran tried to reach out to him, but without him being able to see, or Fran opted not to reach out to him because, when she went back in the next day, that user was not there.
Yeah. I, I, I haven't, I've not seen an anonymous user anytime I've been online. It's almost as if it's one of the people that are following the village board discussions and they come on during that.
You can't get without an invite, it has to be that someone has-
Oh, no, 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 if you send the link to anyone, they can access it.
But who would have shared the link?
Hey, it's us, anybody amongst us could have. Or some, somebody prior to us would have. Anyway, I'm, I'm just, so-
It's possible to go to the, to the share, is it, is it this document?
Yeah. Right now, that's, well, I'm not, not looking at any other documents, I'm just looking at this one, and that person is there.
So I don't see tweets anymore, in place of tweets, I see anonymous beaver.
You're right Kathleen, I don't see tweets, tweets, are you still looking at the document?
Yeah, actually, that's really odd, I, um, but I don't see anonymous beaver either, so.
Could that be you?
Uh, but if you had given me permission.
Uh, let me, can you get out of the document? And, and stay out for a minute and then come back in?
What if she makes a suggestion, won't it pop up with?
Oh, it should, if it's tweeted.
Okay, tweets make a suggestion in the document.
Anywhere you want, tweet, just make a suggestion on the document.
Um, it says I don't have permission to add comments.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so can you get out of the document right now? And then wait for thirty seconds and come back in?
I mean, I don't see anything, I don't see anything changing anywhere right now, like, I don't see anybody active in the document, I just see the name.
Yeah, that's because they don't have the-
Whoever it is doesn't have permission, right?
Great, right, tweets, are you out?
Yeah. The other, the other thing to come, to, to note is that when this happened last week, there were multiple, there were multiple unknown users at once, remember there was Connie Bear and Beaver, there were multiples at the same time.
Yeah.
This, this week, it looks like it's just the one.
Maybe the other people are tired. And just don't want, okay, so let's continue the conversation, we've got three different classification, hosted, unhosted, and special provisional. Uh, for, so the idea, I think, was to identify what's unique about hosted versus unhosted, and I believe that the uniqueness is in the definitions, but there is also the intent to identify fees here, and that the fees would be different, hosted, unhosted, and special provisional, and how many total would be allowed in the village? How many permits would be issued for hosted, short-term rentals, unhosted, short-term rentals, and special provisional, short-term rental? So would it be reasonable to say that, uh, oh, it's gone, the anonymous is gone?
Do we have tweets?
Tweets, are you, are you out of-
I'm out. But I, I go back in if I'm on the beaver.
Yeah, go back in. So, Walter, no, you came back.
No, now she comes in as, it's you tweets, she comes in as anonymous nion cat. It's something's with, something's, someone's writing your Google.
Whoa.
Okay, let's just, let's just go on because they don't have access.
No, I can't do, apparently I can't do anything, so.
Right, so, for, for special provisional, do we want to make that an unlimited number?
I, I think, yeah, I don't know how else we would do that and come up with some number. I'm fine with unlimited and at a hundred dollars.
I don't know how you'd regulate it otherwise. How you'd enforce it, I mean. I just sent, um, Jeff a screenshot so he can see what it looks like.
And so I'll share it with Anthony tomorrow and see if they could give us any insight.
Thank you Kathleen.
Yep.
Um, so I've just put in there unlimited number in the village, a hundred dollars per year, and w, we can discuss changes to that.
Yeah.
For, for unhosted, I think that what we had there was, uh, thirty-four registered SDRs. For hosted, and, and there the fee, um, is as stated in the master fee.
So will then-
And the master fee was published a, along with the public documentation. Um-
Okay, do you remember what we said on that, was it two?
Yeah. It was a hundred dollars for, to apply for the permit, which covered the inspection, and then two hundred and fifty dollars for the permit for the year.
Yes.
Of which fifty percent was, um, refunded.
If it doesn't pass inspection.
If, yes, thank you Kathleen, so it was a hundred, a hundred dollars to submit your application and go through all the processing of the application, and then two fifty to get the permit, and if the, if the inspection failed, you got fifty percent back. So for hosted, do we want a second number?
Um-
Yeah, I think we do, well, I think we need a number there.
Okay, um, let me, I'm gonna, twenty-two.
No, I, I think people will question our arbitrary, the arbitrary nature of-
You think? You think that was arbitrary?
Uh, we gotta bring that up.
Oh.
I'm a capricious.
So, okay, so I, I, I'll change it, I'm gonna make it sixteen, and here's my logic, sixteen and thirty-four is fifty.
But don't you want a higher number of hosted than unhosted? That the goal is, the goal is to reduce, the, the, the Reinbeck, the Reinbeck ordinance tightly limits unhosted. The ones that seem to be the most problematic, so it seems as if you want that number to be lower than the hosted. We want to, we want to be able to, um, give space to folks who are, who are hosting and, and doing the work to be good neighbors, right? Um-
I think hosted should be more than unhosted, uh, I agree, I think it's, you know, it's going to be problematic if we, if it's small amount or a room or whatever, I think that's, and maybe that should be thirty-four and unhosted should be sixteen.
Okay, easily said, easily done.
Cause you're, you're wanting to encourage.
But I don't, so what's the rationale, I mean, the rationale is that, you know, unhosted are probably more problematic, but how did we get to sixteen, and I'm sure that question or somebody wants to can say that's just arbitrary.
Well, the hosted, the thirty-four represents, still represents five percent, right?
Yes.
Um, and, and it, I don't know how you would, Marie, Marie is saying make it an even fifty, right? Which is sort of a-
And that's, and that is totally arbitrary, you know that, so, sorry, you, you saw how that came up with it.
Right, right, right. Um.
However, I, I-
What about making it two point five percent, five percent and two point five percent?
We're gonna have to change a lot in here, s, s, so we, we've talked about short-term rentals being hosted, unhosted, and special provisional. The next, uh, section talks about no more than thirty-four registered SDRs, right? So that's gonna have to change.
Right.
So, so, I mean, we're, right now, we're just grappling with the concept of classification.
Uh huh.
Um, so-
If we, if we stuck with five percent, we could just leave, we could just knock down the number of hosts to twenty-something, and then whatever the equals thirty-four, you know, would be the unhosted.
Well, although, I, I, the number of people that spoke up at the public hearing, many of them had unhosted short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Uh, and I would say the majority of them had unhosted short-term rentals, and they were dissatisfied with the number thirty-four, they felt it was too low, it'd be higher than that.
That's because they had unhosted rentals.
I, 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 I agree, it's because they had unhosted. Um, so, I mean, we could make thirty-four unhosted equal to the thirty-four as originally stated here, and then thirty-four hosted, that's sixty-eight. That's more than ten percent of the village of the properties.
Yeah.
That's a lot, that feels like a lot, ten, saying, saying it as ten percent.
Yeah, and, and, and by the way, one of the other suggestions from Dave was to include R1 and I1 and B1, which adds another set of properties to the, to the number.
Well, that addresses the concern too, that the, that the planning board raised, but by including I1.
Yeah, I still don't remember the planning board stating I1, but I1, um, at this point, I think I1 should be included. So do you want to keep unhosted to be thirty-four?
I, I don't know where we come, you know, it was easy when we were saying five percent and that all made sense. So if we wanted to make five percent but unhosted and hosted, we could divvy that up differently and say that's twenty, or I, I don't know where to go with that.
That, actually, what you're saying there, Dave, seems defensible as a, right, establishing a number, a five percent number and divvying between.
Well, the, the logical would be seventeen and seventeen.
I think you want, it sounds like we're wanting to have the capacity for more hosted properties than unhosted properties.
Well, I think we're knocking the unhosted down to seventeen from what we were going to allow it, kind of like thirty-four, and I, I agree, Marie, I think that most of the people do rent out unhosted properties, so.
Sorry, I thought you were trying to get to, I thought you were saying get to thirty-four total.
I would, but I, I, I don't think that there should be, um, the unhosted, I don't think should be lower necessarily.
Oh, I see what you're saying, in response to the, to the comment you got.
Now, I think most of the pla, most rentals probably that I've seen are on, on, on the websites are unhosted.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, most of them are, are unhosted. And, a, and as I said, the comments that we got back at the public hearing was thirty-four was too low. Uh, I don't think we should, my personal opinion, we shouldn't go higher than thirty-four. Um, but we should also include a number of hosted, and maybe what we do, how about the following? Thirty-four as unhosted and seventeen as hosted.
I wanna, I wanna read the transcript because I, I took, I did tallies based on the written comment, you know, the letters. Um, but I, I, if we can hold, if we can hold the numbers until we have time to read the transcript.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
I would, I would say that you, I don't know, I haven't looked at the transcript, I think, Jeff, I think you said it was a hundred pages? Whatever.
Hundred and twenty.
If you look at the minutes from the, uh, from the public hearing, I thought my-
That's true, Marie.
But I think, I thought he did an excellent job of capturing every speaker and the salient points that each person raised. So, but rather than to go through a hundred and twenty pages, you might want to read through that.
Yeah, that's a better, I, that's a better idea to look at that again, I just don't have, it's mixing in my head what I pulled from written comment and what, what I read in the minutes, I, I don't feel confident myself establishing a number tonight, but if others feel confident, I stand, I stand to the side.
No, let's, let's do the following, I'm gonna-
Put a placeholder in there of thirty-four unhosted and seventeen hosted.
Okay, good enough, and these are shown as comments, sorry, suggestions.
Right.
Not changes, so let's come back to one oh, one hundred dash three, one other thing I would, yeah, is one hundred dash three will need to be renumbered and be put in the, uh, chapter index, once we settle on it.
Yeah.
Before we m, m, move on from this, may I make one more point about special provisional? Um, I, I think that that's gonna be the hardest area to enforce, and if you, if you really want people to be complying and getting inspections, I would make it as easy as possible and as inexpensive as possible so that, so that it's not seen as a hurdle to get past for your family vacation or your one weekend a year, I feel like the, the easier we make it, the more likely we are to get people participating in inspections. It's to, it's cause the goal, right, the, part of the goal here is knowing that the spaces are safe, in addition to thinking about impacts.
Okay, so, um, for special provisional, because it's going to include an inspection, a hundred dollars a year won't cover the processing fee and the inspection.
Okay, that's, that's true, okay.
So I would, I would suggest that it be raised to, I'm gonna say a hundred and fifty.
I think that's good. I think also, I mean, it's gonna be hard to enforce anything, um, but if a special provisional, someone's, you know, and it's not a lot of work. It's like, if somebody's saying it's a lot of work to go to the village hall and to fill out a permit and give a hundred fifty dollars, you know, yeah, it's gonna take a little bit, but then you're gonna have this income coming in, so, you know, there's a little bit of give and take, and, and a permit will be signed, so neighbors will know, and there'll be dates on it, you know, a date on the provisional, like, if you're going to do it from February second to February fourteenth, whatever, that'll be there. So if neighbors, you know, uh, the neighbors are gonna be part of the enforcement, they're the ones that are gonna be saying, somebody, you know, they're over there, do they have a permit? If they have a problem, they go to check, check out the dates, and if they don't, then they'll be fined.
One thing we might consider is to, at some point, once this goes into effect, is to l, list the, the addresses of each short-term rental so that the public is aware.
Yeah.
Just as a thought.
Well, it's, because they're getting a permit, it's publicly available anyway, right? So it's not as if you'd be, you'd be, you'd be providing something that's already public record, so it's not as if you'd be outing information.
But you'd have to foil it.
True, but it still could be publicly accessed.
Yes, but you, what, what would- Yes, but you, what, what would you foil? I think, I think that what you would have to do is foil a permit for seventeen locust rid. I don't think you can, Jeff, correct me on this. Can I foil all permits that have been applied for?
I think, I mean, that's pretty broad in scope and we would certainly go back and say that's too broad in scope, but it's been done.
I suspect that a number of people in the village have no idea what a foil is or how to apply for one. But anyway, let's come back to this.
Well, just to be clear, I wasn't suggesting that that's the mechanism. I'm saying, I'm agreeing with you and saying it's, in some way, they are public records already. Even though they're, but they would normally be behind foil, I don't disagree with your concept.
Okay, so I'm making another change. I'm adding I1 to one hundred dash three A.
Marie, unhosted, should we, do you want to put a placeholder for fee as stated in the master schedule? The fee should be different than.
Uh, good point. Fee as stated in master.
And I think we should add what, what's gonna be required. Or like if special provisional, is it, it's like all regulations it has to comply to? I mean, because we have the bond and all of that, are we gonna, I think we're gonna have to simplify that for maybe hosted and provisional.
All regulations um stated in short. Requirements. I'm just putting placeholders in here.
Okay, yeah, we can follow up. I, I, more time into that.
Yep. Now, the, um, the next one, short-term rental requirements, short-term rental permits. There subsequently, there was a statement about what if that the public lottery would only be invoked when the number of the applications exceeds the number of permits. So this, this, this one has to be reworded.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with changing that. And I, I think they want the change you made now. You can accept, I think, unless someone has problems with it. I mean, I agree with it.
The I1?
Which one? Okay. Done. Okay. Um, so if you go down to F as in Frank, uh, there's the inclusion of I1. Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. And if you look at I.
On B, sorry, Marie, on B, are you still changing that? Like I kind of distracted you and went back to A. Adding the, if it exceeds the number of permits.
I'm, I'm gonna have to reword that, Dave.
Okay.
I would like to come, I'll do it tomorrow.
Okay, fine. Okay, sorry.
Uh, no problem. So if you go down to I, I added there, um, oh, sorry, I, what's this one? Dave, you recommended adding multiple rental simultaneously are not permitted. I believe that's covered if you scroll up C. As in Charlie, each property tax ID within the village can only be used for one short-term rental unit at any given time. Certainly, the parenthetical phrase, multiple rental, rental simultaneously are not permitted. It's, sometimes it's a good idea to repeat the statement. That would be repeating, in my mind, I, the parenthetical expression there is repeating what C clearly says.
Which that C says?
Yeah.
Which, if you look at C.
Okay, yeah.
So, um, so can we not, do you want not to put in multiple?
You can take that out.
Okay, so I'm gonna.
I can't, I now can't see your edits.
At all?
Yeah, not at all.
Okay, hold on a second, tweet. I've gotta get out of here and do something a little different.
I don't see Maria as a user anymore.
You should be able to see.
I'm gonna take a, I'm gonna take a picture for Jeff again so he can. Marie, do you have it open on your screen right now?
Uh, no, I do not.
Oh, okay, that's why I don't see you.
Yeah. Okay, tweet, see whether or not you can see it now.
Okay.
Well, I now see that you're back, but I, I don't see the last edit that you made.
Hold on a second.
Do you see the comments on the side and the red line, and the red lines? Or changes in red in the text?
Yes, but strangely, I only see things that were done prior to the meeting, not.
Well, what, what has happened is every time I accept a change, it gets deleted. So you wouldn't see that. What you should see, if you go to, um.
Things that are, have not been accepted yet, basically, right? Okay. Oh, I just saw.
That's.
Okay. All right. I think we're, I think we're back.
You see it now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yes. And, and you're back as anonymous nine cat.
Excellent.
Okay. So, um, and in G, in George, an accessory building cannot be used as a short-term rental. Uh, Dave, you had a number of other types of structures. Uh, so this needs to be reworked.
Yes. Did I include them somewhere or I don't forget where?
Yeah, later on, yes. We'll see it in a little bit. Um, if you look at J as in Joseph, uh, I1 is in there and I'm going to accept that if everybody's okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Rentals shall be, I, I made this change to be consistent. Rent in L as in Lawrence, rental ship shall be a minimum of two consecutive nights and a maximum of twenty-nine consecutive nights.
So some of the, I'm thinking in particular, there was a gentleman on Market Street who referred to the number, the frequency of having one night visitors who came to do a day hike and left. And wondering if it makes sense for hosted, for, for L to apply to unhosted, but to give hosted S, uh, SDRs, the, 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 the flexibility to have one night.
So the issue with two consecutive nights is, or one consecutive nights, is the arrival and departure of guests night after night after night. And so let's say somebody pulls up to their short-term rental, hosted or unhosted. And they then start unloading their car and I'm attributing, I'm, I'm now gonna repeat a comment that I heard. The woman inside says, honey, did, I think I left my cellphone in the car. Can you find it?
Right, right, right.
At nine or ten o'clock at night, or the person who is in their home at ten o'clock at night or even nine o'clock at night. And someone rings their doorbell and says, is this twelve grand view terrace? I'm your, I'm your short-term rental guest.
We're addressing some of that with signage, right?
Well, except that the signage is, it's on the building and it needs to be visible from the street. At night, signage on a building is not necessarily visible from the street at night. And so somebody could pull up to, um, what they think is twelve grand view and, and they're in front of sixteen grand view and they pull into my driveway and they ring my doorbell. I'm not really interested in getting those kinds of doorbell rings at night.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if we're, we had one comment on that. I'm wondering if we're, we're already limiting check-in times. Um, it seems like that, that L is useful in the case of unhosted. And I think one of the other concerns with getting to two consecutive nights was trying to avoid party houses, right? Renting for one night, having a party and leaving. Seems like that hosted, the opportunity for hosted SDRs to do one night, you know, we're, we're expecting responsibility on the part of the host. Maybe that's wishful thinking, but.
Yeah, except that the host, if somebody pulls up to a short-term rental, they have the wrong, wrong street number. Um, there's a separate entrance, as you point out. The spouse A or, or person A yells out to person B, you have my cellphone, honey?
I think, I just think we're, we're legislating for the extreme here of when someone's door might get knocked on.
Well, my, my concern isn't the knocking on the door. I live right next to two, um, that are illegal. And it, and people come in, well, first of all, I work, um, so rentals happen. They just don't happen on weekends. They happen all week during the summer.
Right, right.
And someone comes in and then the next person comes in and the next person and the next person. And they're unloading right below my window and I work in the morning. And as I suspect, most people in the village probably do. And they just, you know, they're not, you know, outrageous or anything, but they're opening and shutting doors and kids are running out or whatever. So, you know, my thing is like, if you can limit, um, the one-night stands, uh, I think that would be, in my opinion, and in my instance, uh, and my experience, that that would be better. Yeah.
One other, one other thing that happened today, as it turns out, is that Jeff and I were standing outside and we were approached by a man who said he has a problem where um, and a, a, a unit is being rented to, this has nothing to do with short-term rentals. And yet it has to do with short-term rentals. A, a, a unit is being rented and the person that lives there tends to have a lot of friends over. And they party until one o'clock in the morning. And the person next door on either side or the person upstairs or the person downstairs can't sleep because of the constant visiting and, and noise.
So we have. Right? We have a noise ordinance. Call the police.
We do have a noise ordinance and the noise ordinance, I believe, states at seventy-five decibels. Do you have any idea how loud?
It's very loud, hugely loud.
Has nothing, nothing comparable to people having a party at night.
In this new law, we have, we do address parties.
Yes, we do. We do. Um, but my point was that the, the effects of having a short-term rental next to you can be very disruptive to your, to, to the way you need to live your life. So I don't think that the legislation is too restrictive. Particularly when we look at how close many of the units in the village are to one another, in many cases sharing a common wall. So I, I don't think it's too restrictive, my, my opinion.
Okay.
I actually, I kind of agree. I, I think I'm okay with the, with the requirement of, of two nights.
Okay, so then I, I will accept those changes?
Good.
Okay, um, consecutive nights. Except. And maximum of twenty-nine, except. Okay, so.
I think M we need to change since we, maybe.
Um, actually, a, a, actually, that's sort of fundamental. If we, if we, if we, if we remove that, then anyone can buy a property.
Right.
And for an investment, right? And that's not what we want to do. I don't think.
Got it. No, I was thinking.
Stated in M and then reinforced in N.
And M and, yeah, well, N is a sort of a, yes, it's a variation on M. Yeah. Let's see. I'm just scrolling down to the next. So the public lottery system, uh, Dave, I'm going to highlight this as this needs to be worked in, in a, a couple of different places.
On, on Q, um, and a hundred dash three Q. I'd like to hear people's feelings on, on, uh, you know, maintaining a record. I, 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 you know, uh, you know, if somebody has a permit, I don't know, whatever. I don't, I'm not sure what that gets us.
I think it just gets us paperwork and enforcement challenges.
I agree.
Okay, I mean, we were just talking a little while ago about cumbersome or whatever and people being, you know, turned away or off or whatever. I think that's one of them that would be.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I'm fine with it. It was just from prior discussions, so.
Would you like to delete it?
No, I'm fine with it. I guess if we're talking about, you know, making things too cumbersome or restrictive.
I'm sorry, I, I thought you were arguing to take it out. You're arguing to leave it in?
I'm, I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing. I'm saying.
I don't mean arguing. I mean, make, are you, are you stating the position?
I'm just saying that before there was a, a comments on being restrictive and not making this easy for people. So I wanted to hear what people had to think about, you know, guests having to, you know, record number of guests and submit them to the village, which we did. So that's all I need. I think it's just that.
I, I think that it's something that's gonna be, that's cumbersome for, for guests and for staff. And it's something else that staff have to maintain related to this ordinance. We're already strained. I just, I don't see the value. I don't know what it gains us by making people do that.
Well, what it, it did, it, it doesn't put any, um, burden or onus on the guests. It's the host.
I'm sorry, I meant the host.
Okay. So what this does is it provides a record that the village can use to determine whether or not the, the rules are being followed or the number of short-term rental nights for, um, for term rentals.
So, so, so you're going, we're assuming, I mean, I, I, I'd like to think that folks, well, folks will be honest, but it assumes that the record you're getting is an honest recounting of the numbers of people.
Yeah.
And so, so, so when they come in, every, when the reports come in from, let's say, we end up at fifty, when the reports come in from fifty short-term rentals every six months, what, who's reviewing them and what are we doing with them? Are we creating another layer of work for code enforcement?
No, I would think that it would be, um, an indication that the short-term rental host is not abiding by the rules. And I believe that in the penalty section, I have to go down to that. Uh, the penalties. At the penalty section, if you, if you, if you do not conform, the first fine is a thousand dollars. The second fine is two thousand dollars and the third fine is twenty-five hundred dollars and you lose your, your permit.
So that's the mechanism. We just have to make sure that we have allocated staff time to be dealing with the reports.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Um, while we were going through, I was looking at the minutes since I don't have, I can't look at your lovely faces. I went through the, the comments, um, from, from the public, the. From the public, the minutes from the public hearing and five people identified as hosted, as hosts. Having hosted STRs and five people identified themselves as being, having unhosted STRs and the rest of the comments were. Neighbors. Or res, other residents making comments. So it was about even in the, in the spoken public comment, not about even, exactly even.
Okay.
It's really hard to draw a conclusion from public hearings and the number of people that speak. I mean, it's.
What I'm just pointing it out as a, as a data point. We're assuming that people are being honest when they say they're hosting, they're in the, in residence, right?
I agree with that, that those numbers are correct. I just, it doesn't, I don't think you would assume or go from there. And take the leap to that it's fifty-fifty in the village.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So I'm not sure that, that actually, you know, knowing that really helps us with.
I agree. I was just, you were, you were raising the question earlier about how to divide the numbers and, and Marie suggested looking at the minutes. So I looked at the minutes and that's, I don't, I don't know that that helps us get any closer.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
So.
Were you in agreement or not agreeing with the guest signing in or signing?
I guess my. My thought on it is. It does seem a bit cumbersome. I understand the logic in terms of. Knowing therefore if the person, if they're being compliant. And then, you know, for the whatever penalties are associated with non-compliance, I just do wonder. You know, knowing how much paper and how much data. We get. You know. Who is going to be responsible for ta- for going through that and making sure that all eyes are crossed and, and tease? You know, I just, I just wonder about the process of that because it is another layer of, of. Of enforcement that's happening and, but if. If you agree that, that. We'll figure out how that person gets that work done, then I guess it's okay. But I, I would agree that it seems a little bit, does seem a little bit cumbersome to me.
I think one other thing it will have, it'll have, it'll give us data on how many rentals are actually happening if people are honest. I mean. And we, you know, we can just put them in a file and not go over every, you know, every one of them, but have them. I think that would be helpful if we wanted to, you know, then look at records and surveys and say, well, this is how many rentals were last year. This is how many rentals in this period. I think that's where it would be helpful. You know, people.
Yeah, no, that's fair. I mean, and then I wonder like, so every six months.
We can make it a year. I, I don't know why it's six months.
That might be less cumbersome.
Drop a bomb on us in a year. I don't know.
Right, it could be a lot of, a lot of information, but. I don't know, maybe that's something to consider, maybe.
Information that could be filed and, and used as, as we, as we see fit. I don't know if it's going to deter people or.
So let me ask the question, Kathleen, do you think it should be changed from six months?
Think that's a reasonable compromise if it's staying in to switch from six months to a year.
And tweets?
Yep, I think that's a reasonable compromise as well.
Okay, Dave?
I'm good. You're saying it's every six months, right?
Right now it says every six months. Do you want to change it to every year?
I, I'm, whatever the majority thinks I have know. If, if twelve, if everyone thinks that twelve months will just be too much on everyone, then six months. Wasn't sure how, I, I didn't hear or understand the answer from the last two trustees. Were they four or one year or six months?
I was suggesting that one year seemed reasonable.
And I was in agreement.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that. We can change that if that seems like it's a total mess during the whole first year.
Oh shit. I was in editing mode. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, alrighty.
Just need a space after twelve.
Maybe just highlight it and highlight it and put a comment in so Fran knows we made that edit, edit.
Yeah, I'm, I'll talk to her about it. So the next change is. In the public lottery system, one hundred dash six on page six. And so Dave has entered some comments here. If the number of applications for short term rental permits, see the total number allowed, then, then a lottery will be held to determine. Which permits will be issued and the following procedure will take place. I'm going to highlight this. And add a comment. That this, this. To be. In other places.
So does that mean? The first thirty-four. Is it, is it a first come, first served for the first thirty-four or whatever the number ends up being? And then after that, it's lottery?
No, I think it should be a lottery if it goes over the number.
Exactly, th- there's a date.
Oh, they all go into a lottery.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see how you do first come, first served.
Yeah, I don't either. That's why I was surprised. Got it.
Well, that needs clarification if you make it there.
Okay. And so.
And ask, ask somebody, I'm. Ask somebody other than those of us who've been looking at it a long time, if that reads clearly, you know? I, I was, I was confused by it, but it may not be confusing to other people.
I saw I've added a comment that says further clarification needed and that, that continues through. A, B, C, blah, 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 blah. And then the next change is, ah, Dave, the temporary structures, tents, trailers and recreational vehicles. This needs to be. I want to insert a comment here. Needs to be consolidated.
I thought this should have been there originally and then just recently we have a complaint from a resident on someone that has a trailer on their. On their lot that they, uh, uh, they're either renting it or family members are living in it or something, so. I think we should make it clear. It's another, a number of other laws that I looked at.
I had suggested that a long time ago and folks thought it wasn't necessary, but I absolutely agree, Dave, that it should be there.
Okay, so I've added a comment that needs to be consolidated in an earlier section. The earlier section refers to. Auxiliary structures, oh, sorry. What's the word? It starts with an A, I can't remember. Oh. What is it?
Accessory buildings?
Thank you, yes. Yes, so, and, and that's in one hundred dash three G. Okay.
Marie, we'll have to also change the, the hundred dash three to one oh four if we leave the classifications in there.
Yes, it, it will require renumbering everything.
Okay.
Yeah, and that should be noted. And I, I think I noted that today. Okay, fees and number of STRs, that is one hundred nine, one hundred dash nine. The village board of trustees shall set caps on the number of both hosted and unhoned STRs and such application fees. I think here.
What I'm trying to do there, Marie, is I wanted to add that, so as we did with the fees, we'd be able to change that by resolution and not have to. Go to a public hearing.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the reason.
I'll work on that.
Go to the master fee, right? State that and other chapters.
Yeah, change via resolution.
So, yeah, it might be totally, you might, you're definitely have to clean that, but that's, that might, my intention was so that we could change the number and not have to.
Right, right. So that brings us to one hundred dash ten, A, one. Where the recommendation here is to change the fine for the first offense to one thousand dollars. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I think that was, that was one of the really strong points that came through was to make, to make the penalties hurt. So that people are more likely to comply. I also. Was struck by the gentleman who spoke about his Airbnb, I think it was in California. And that the fines were levied against, fines were levied for violation against, not for non-compliance, but. You know, noise, noise violations, et cetera, that the fines were levied against both the guest and the owner.
What are you suggesting?
Well, he was suggesting that, that hosts in, I'm sorry that I can't remember the name of the city. That he had, where he has a place, but that, that hosts take compliance very seriously because. Both, they, they, they both pay and the guests pay if they're disturbing neighbors.
So.
So it encourages hosts to be clear with their guests about what requirements are.
So what are you suggesting be changed?
Um, so. I don't know exactly where, because I'm just looking at this for the first time. But the operating without following the procedures and regulations in this chapter, that there be. First offense. Maybe it's under the first offense. Well, I don't know. It seemed as if, it seemed as if it would, would, would be. Would be beneficial and it was reinforced in a follow-up letter to have some sort of impact on the guest as well as the host. So it would have to be, there would have to be like a C section, I would imagine, because this is set up as an owner in A. And a person operating an STR in B. So C might, C might be a third category that would be fines levied against. Guests.
I think it's a little tricky for the, the owners, the one that's taking out the permit and they're the ones that are signing the contract, so to speak. So I'm not sure going after the, I, I don't know how they did it in California, but I. That would be hard or something that the owner could put in their.
Oh, that a fee, that the, the, the additional fee is levy by there. Well, maybe it's worth following up with, with that gentleman to ask more. I mean, if, if people are interested in that idea, I'd be happy to follow up with him and try to learn more and, and look at that. Ordinance.
I'm, I'm good with the way it is now.
Yeah, I, I, I personally, I don't see how the village can levy a fine. Against a guest and expect any reimbursement for the fine.
Palm Springs was the.
Yeah.
The city.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll take a look and see how it's laid out and see if there's anything of value, but for now. Leave it.
Well, actually, for now, do we agree on one thousand dollars for A one?
Yes, I do.
I, yeah, I did do. I think that's. It's peanuts.
Okay, so. And for two, second offense?
Fine.
Two thousand, Tweeps, you good with that?
It makes sense, doubles, sure.
Okay. And Marie misspelled hundred.
I wonder if the third offense should. I mean, you went up. I don't understand why twenty-five hundred. I wonder, this be like, you know, it should be like five thousand dollars and, and no. Eligible for a permit.
Is that what you're recommending?
I mean, maybe five is, is. Too much, but I feel like it should be, we don't want. To continue this, this process with this person if they're continuing these, you know, if they're. These offenses are happening, you know, I mean, after the second one, it should be. More than five hundred dollars, more than the second, you know?
So what do you recommend?
That's a good question. I mean, I kind of, I think maybe five, to be honest, I kind of think five because I think we're being, we want to be very serious about. About this. If the penalties don't, are just kind of like the price of doing business, then. You know, I, I think that disincentivizes people to do the right thing, so.
I agree.
I agree too.
The one thing that we have in these though, it's like, what actually is the offense now? If the offense is they didn't have a sign up? Is that going to be an offense? Is that strike one? Are you going to find somebody a thousand dollars for that? Or, you know, where, what regulations are we talking about?
Okay, so a sign, a sign is a requirement to receive a permit.
Yeah, so the regulations are.
So checking, check-ins after a certain time. Not posting the village permit number in their listings.
Question on, on the time, so who's?
I'm sorry, but let's, let's come back to the third offense.
Okay.
The, of the proposal on the table from Tweeps is the fine become five thousand dollars.
I agree.
Dave agreed with that, Kathleen?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so this becomes.
But actually, my question is related to that because you were, I'm wondering if a person is checking in at ten. Who's out there? Noting that and then, like, like, how, how would we know that that person, that this has happened?
Yeah, I think that's going to be one of those enforcement things that neighbors will be calling in and I don't know if we'd be able to enforce it, but at least. Maybe we can put them on notice. I, I think a lot of this is kind of, it's going to be hard.
Right, because what if you don't, I mean, what if you have a, a, a really, not a good relationship with your neighbor, so you decide.
Yeah, yeah.
Really cause a lot of.
A way that you could say that they came in at ten o'clock and they could say, no, we didn't.
Right, right.
You know, this makes me think about. One of the, one of the ideas that was put forward, and I can't remember who the speaker was, for forming a. Sort of like a, like a freestanding or ad hoc complaint review board. Consisting of short term rental hosts and other residents where. That where complaints could be made to that board as a way to try to alleviate some of the pressure on the building inspector. And have. Citizen assistance in mediating a conflict with neighbors.
Doesn't that add more administrative overhead?
Well, if they're, then we might more, more likely, you may be more likely with a group like that to come forward with solutions that. Are more satisfactory rather than the village pursuing. Attempting to pursue individual property owners as Troops was describing, right? There'd be an internal, sort of an internal account, there could be. If it worked well, an internal accountability with that, with hosts, if they were accountable to a host's board.
Well, for now, I, I think that's another step that. Could take, but.
The ordinance first.
Ad hoc committee at this moment or try to organize that or see if it would even get off, so in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just pointing it out as a, as a possibility. I think getting this, getting this tied up and done first is, is important, but. and done first is, is important, but is the best option. Yes.
Okay, so I've noted B, that the numbers need to be changed. And I will work on proposals for that. It's now 8:20 and we have one more topic on our agenda for tonight, which is to, um, approve the, um, minutes. So the minutes to be approved are the May 4th minutes. Um, I make a motion to approve the May 4th minutes as updated by Jeff today.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Sorry. You can follow through it, Marie. Take it away.
Okay. Okay, the next one is the five, six minutes, uh, which, um, I make a motion to approve those.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then the five 11 minutes.
I just caught something flipping through my, um, the 11th that I didn't see earlier, which is Our Lady of Loretto is spelled wrong, I think. What did I say? I was just flipping through and I, it caught my eye. Uh, on page six, report of mayor and trustees. He will be speaking with Our Lady of Loretto. Isn't Loretto two Ts?
Um, Jeff, is that one of the changes that we made today?
It's not.
It's not. Okay.
I will correct that if you want to approve them as amended.
Okay, so the, um, I lost track of.
11 minutes.
Five amended. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, five 18 minutes as amended today. I make a motion to approve them.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, done. Um, so that wraps up the night's session.
One thing I'd ask before, before we adjourn is, uh, these are suggestions and stuff that I went through, um, today. So if there's other things that I missed, these are the things I highlighted or things that I, I changed. So if there are other things that you would like to have changed, um, or like to bring up, um, you know, I'd comment on the, uh, make suggestions on this document and we'll address them the next meeting.
Sounds good. When do we, on Thursday, we have parking committee. When do we next do code? It'd be useful, it'd be helpful to have as far out as we can calendar.
Jeff had given us one or was that for last month, Jeff? I know you gave us.
I have not updated it. Marie, correctly, if I'm wrong, I thought you would. Did you finish code?
No, um.
Got through everything that was on the agenda last time for code.
So, so, um, we, um, got through 127. We have to go back to 134. Uh, there were some recommended changes to 134 and, and of course, 100. And I'd have to go back to my notes, Jeff. I, I don't, can't remember off the top of my head.
We finished once, we finished 64, right? With the, with the natural resources last week.
No, no, sorry. I haven't gotten a final response from.
Oh, okay.
Therapy.
Right. That's right.
So that, that is still open. Um, 127, 127 will be part of the public meeting Thursday night. Uh, 120, sorry, 126 will be part of a public meeting Thursday night, which may require changes to 126. Sorry, it will require changes to 126, 134. I think that's it then.
And, and I saw that you, you sent out that, um, separate document for the changes in 134 related to interpretation and variance.
Yes.
I haven't spent time with it yet, but I saw that you sent that. I just need to read it.
I'll prepare a tentative calendar tomorrow for June and July and send it out to everybody.
That would be helpful because then next week when we're, or whenever we pick up, um, talking about the local legislation again, we know what we need to plan around. And is there a, is there a, a rough schedule yet for public hearings?
I had sent one out a couple of months ago.
Right. I didn't know if it did change since then.
Asking people what they, how they felt about the, the grouping of chapters. I've heard nothing back.
Okay. Look again.
Thing that you can share with me as well. I, I definitely didn't miss you, but.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
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 Good night, everyone.